And everyone, yep, we're ready to go.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic it stands, one nation, indivisible, and one. This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward abides with the Nebraska Open Meetings Law and conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed in the meeting room where Greg Butcher is currently located, which is required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is also posted in that room. And yes, Greg, we are recording. Okay. A participant, as far as addressing the council, please message Greg directly, and then he will call on you when it's your turn to queue. You'll be asked to state your name and address for the clerk's record. You'll be limited to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward deserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes, President.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Here, Wilken.
Present.
Camprit. Oh, it's on video. You gotta do audio.
Here.
There we go. Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck.
Beck.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
All members present.
All right. The first item this evening is the draft minutes for February 16, 2021.
Move approved.
Second.
Moved by Wilken, second by Coulterman.
With a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Camprit.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck. Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right, the next three items make up this evening's consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Singleton, second by Schmidt.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Camprit.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck. Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right, the next item is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of sanitary sewer system revenue bonds. Greg?
I'll throw it right to Paul, and he'll just lead us off in this incredible discussion. We haven't seen him in a while, and so he gets to experience Zoom with us.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, everybody, for having me. Can you hear me okay? Is the volume okay?
Just make sure you identify yourself and who you're with, address.
Very good. Paul Greger with DA Davidson. Our offices are located at 450 Regency Parkway, Omaha, Nebraska. My personal address is 2620 South 96th Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm currently on vacation in Maui, so I'm using, calling in from a vacation address on South Kihei Road, 2284, to be precise. So it's nice to be here remotely. We have in front of you tonight, if you're consideration, an ordinance drafted by Mike Rogers of Gilmore and Bell. He's also on the line. And the ordinance would authorize the issuance of sewer revenue refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed $3,200,000. It would, the intent would be to keep the payments scheduled on the dates that are currently in place. And all we would be doing is refinancing the bonds for interest cost savings. The existing rates on the bonds is a weighted average of 2.4%. In today's market, we think that rate is closer to 1.4%. This rate is up slightly from where we saw the market when we began this process. We're projecting today net savings to the city of approximately $140,000. When this process started, we were in the $170,000 to $175,000 range. So there is a little bit of work we have to do between Nick and Greg and Mike and myself in order to get the bonds ready to go to market for our funding. So it's likely we have another four to six weeks of due diligence and paperwork to do. But this will kick off the process. If for some reason the markets move away from us and this no longer makes sense, the city will be under no obligation to do the refunding. All this does tonight is to establish parameters for the sale of the bonds and to give authority to Greg and Nick to have us proceed to hopefully what should be a successful refund. With that, I would do my best to answer any questions, anyone like that.
Great, thank you. Anything questions?
Hey, Mayor, did, I mean, back in the day when I first got on council, I mean, we were bond after bond after bond. And did we set parameters at that time on refinancing of bonds that we were looking for certain savings to come our way and not just refinancing for the sake of refinancing?
I don't think we have a, an established threshold for that. I think really the, the bond company, they're monitoring those bond rates. And then I think when they see an opportunity for savings, then they'll approach us as to whether we want to refinance. But I'll let Mike, do you, or either one, do you want to speak to that?
I can, I can start off. So the, the ordinance does, Council, Councilman Schmidt set out parameters that the, that the, the city council is effectively delegating to the administration. And one of the requirements is that there, there must be, there must be present value savings before the financing can go forward. Included in the calculation of present, present value savings is the cost of issuance for the financing. Now, I'm sure we, we keep that as a, a general parameter and try not to have, have it be too specific as to a dollar amount. If you were to say, set a minimum present value savings of 3%, and then you end up at 2.9%, that's, that's a difficult situation to face. So I think the, the council is trusting the city administration to use good judgment and in making sure there's sufficient enough present value savings to make the transaction worthwhile. I don't, my compensation as bond coun, and I'm bond counsel for the city, so I'm representing you as your, your lawyer in this transaction. I get paid only if the financing goes forward, so you're not at risk on that. Same with, with Paul Greger and his underwriting firm. So there's really the only cost to the city with moving forward with this right now is your administrative cost. Obviously, for, for Nick and Greg, it's, it's some administrative time and effort for them to do it. But otherwise, in terms of third party costs, there aren't really any until, until you get farther into it. So if the market moves away faster than you would, as Paul mentioned, you wouldn't be under any obligation. But back to the, I guess the initial question was, is there a minimum amount of savings? There, there isn't one set or established in this, in this ordinance.
If I could, if I could add on a little bit, I think that's a great answer. But what I'd like to add on too is years ago when we were doing this, it did feel like we're coming to the city. Gosh, every two or three months with, oh, here we found another refunding candidate. And then analyze whether or not it made sense. And in, in most cases, we would, if we agreed to move forward, the council, I think, always supported that and was, has always acted as a good steward of taxpayer funds and rate payer funds as well. A few years ago, we, we came to council. We, I think we heard some feedback that, you know, gosh, if we're gonna do three or four refundings in a year, it would sure be a lot easier to just focus one meeting on. So we came to a council meeting and we presented the year, a year's worth of financing essentially. And we asked council to approve several ordinances that evening. And that's sort of become our, our current practice, more or less. And we met with, we meet with administration usually around budget time, or as we get into the year a little bit, and we, we analyze all of the possible refund, refinancings that might make sense in the coming months. So in this case, we analyzed trip revenue, water revenue, general obligation, highway allocation, fund pledge, and sewer revenue. And the, after we met and walked through the analysis, the, really the only refunding that, that seemed to make sense to the working group is the one that we have, that we're showing you this evening. So a little bit of work behind the scenes, but in, in no case would we ever ask you to refinance bonds, just to refinance bonds. We wanted to make sure that there's meaningful savings to the city. Mike Rogers referenced a threshold of 3% as a discussion item. That is the general rule of thumb that many issuers consider. When we showed the refunding to the city, the present value ratio was about five and a half percent, and now it's down to just over 4%. So by, by most industry participants, this has all the appearances of a, of a good refunding. And we'll continue on this path unless we're directed otherwise. If, if savings were to become diminished and we were in that, you know, I don't know what the number is, 1% or so, then I think we would, we'd have a meeting with the working group and talk about maybe putting the brakes on and coming back at a, at a later date. So we're, we are paying attention to these things and I do appreciate the comfortable question.
Yeah. Thanks for the pressure, guys. It's like, say, it's been a while since we've seen you.
Been too long.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I will note, Nick Wolf, Finance Director for the city is also online with us. And Paul and Mike did a great job in explaining the process that we walked through with them as kind of the administrative side of this and taking a look at what options we have and, and bringing that to us about once a year so that we can then fulfill that obligation to you guys and bring you everything in a one, one stop shop. So thanks to Mike and Paul for all the work that they're doing on this. And Nick.
Those are the other questions or comments. I would ask if someone would like to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
All right. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of sewer revenue refunding bonds, series 2021 of the city of Seward, Nebraska, and the principal amount of not to exceed $3,200,000 for the purpose of a refunding all or a portion of $50,000 of outstanding sanitary sewer system revenue bonds, series 2013, and $2,925,000 of outstanding sanitary sewer system revenue and refunding bonds, series 2016, and B, paying costs of issuance of said bonds, prescribing the form of said bonds, entering into a contract with the registered owners of said bonds, providing for the sale of said bonds and designation of certain terms, providing for the redemption of bonds and indebtedness being refunded, providing for the application of the proceeds of said bonds, authorizing the delivery of said bonds to the purchaser, and providing for the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number 2021-6, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
So moved.
Second.
You're muted, Greg.
Moved by Coulterman, second by Wilken.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. I guess, please call the roll. Never mind.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Camprit.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck. Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Again, this is ordinance number 2021-6. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So moved.
Let me get it. Moved by Coulterman, second by Camprit.
If the motion is second, is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number 2021-6 be finally passed and adopted? Please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Camprit.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck. Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Paul.
Item, item number two under administrative items is a resolution designated city items as surplus. Greg?
Periodically throughout the year, when we're getting ready to dispose of items in a number of ways, whether we're gonna junk them, auction them, put them up for sale, trade them in, however, we're designated to do that, we try to surplus those items. Before you, you have a list of items. The two big ones, just to catch them, are the two 2015 Nissan Leaf vehicles. These were vehicles that we purchased through a grant project through NCEA, through kind of that electricification project that installed both the chargers in town and then the opportunity to purchase vehicles. These are 2015 models, probably purchased potentially in 2014. And what we ultimately found is, as this technology has progressed, these have unfortunately become completely obsolete. We have a hard time getting a full charge out of them and making it to Lincoln, which is one of the bigger ones. Obviously, we use them mostly for just going around town, but we'd love to utilize them for long-term trips because then we get the, the use of electricity. Since we sell electricity, kind of the, it's a two-way street that works out well for the city. But ultimately, these ones are getting to the end of their useful life. And so we would like to dispose of these. I think we'll probably look at just selling them on the market potentially. If somebody lives in town and would like something that can kind of get around on, on a small charge and make it back home every day, these might be good for them. But for the amount of driving and stuff that we do do for our people that can actually utilize a vehicle like this, it's just not a, a good technology aim for more. Again, you can get vehicles that get substantially more miles per charge nowadays because the technology is so much further. We were kind of on the cutting edge of this when we purchased these. And that's why we're retrofitting all of our charging stations and catching the technology up. So I did check in with NCEA. They did give us approval. We've had them for over five years, so we can dispose of them as we wish. We don't need to report anything back because we've completed our grant obligation on it. I can answer any other questions you have on items on the list. That's all I got.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions or comments from the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
All right. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number 2021-4. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So moved.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by, I believe, was it Beck? Sorry. Beck, second by Singleton.
All right, with a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Camprit.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right, the next item we have is updated job description for city clerk slash human resources director. Greg?
Let's start this with the same sad statement that I started my email to the council with, is that all good things come to an end. And as the council's aware, but maybe not the public, our distinguished assistant administrator, city clerk, HR director, treasurer, you can add like 300 more titles to that of stuff that unfortunately I make Bonnie do, is retiring in April. And so we were given notice by Bonnie last week. And so as we tend to do when we do have these openings, we try to take a look at our current positioning, our plans for staffing and responsibilities, and move things around accordingly when we have an opening available to us. And we wanted to do that before we ultimately put this out for ad so that we were, we were really grasping correctly the, the job description. So I worked with Bonnie and then also with Nick Wolf, our finance director, to generate the job title you have in front of you and the new description and list of all duties and responsibilities. We are converting this one back to a city clerk human resources director. I felt that that is probably the level at which we could get the best candidates. Further, it had a lot of budgetary items that were in there from the treasurer position. When we brought on the finance director, we didn't remove or adjust any of the job description that was associated with this position before. It's a lot of the items that were associated with the budget obligations were removed. And then we just cleaned up in general the way that we kind of stylize all of our job descriptions now. I think, depending on, on what potential candidates you have, this job's really going to be heavy on work that's involved with undertaking the records and obligations and becoming, being the city clerk, and then the, the real heavy obligations with the, the human resources side of this. And so I think it's a proper listing. I think you'll have an ordinance that comes up next that amends this title, and we can get into the discussions, I think, with the salary on it, with all these adjustments. But as it goes for job duties and everything, I think that's where we settled on it. So super sad to see Bonnie go. We, I don't have a lot of time left, and so they're trying as much as I can out of her before she goes. And I don't know if we'll be able to get any overlap or not. That will depend on the process of getting somebody hired. And again, the city clerk position by state statute is required to be ultimately appointed by the mayor and approved by this council. So, answer any questions you have.
So, Greg, do we, we're still satisfying the state requirement for the treasurer? Is that like under the finance director, right? Even though we don't have title anymore?
Yes, it's in the finance director. Correct, Nick. Nick's still on. I might have to unmute him.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, the council appointed me as treasurer when I started, and, and that's included in my job title as well.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
We let him sign the checks. Any other questions?
I believe this just requires a simple motion. Is that right, Greg?
That's correct.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Camprit, second by Wilken.
The motion is second. Please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Camprit.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Miller. Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right. Next item number four is an ordinance amending the comprehensive pay plan, changing the title of city clerk slash human resources director.
This tends to be kind of the go-between every time we do a job description change. If we do just the title, we want our titles associated with our pay ordinance to match. I did go through, because I know I had questions about it, with reducing the description. I did pull up my most recent comparability that I provide for you each year, and I do compare salary, retirement, and health insurance, as we tend to look at when we do this, to come up with your total HRV and look at the comparable towns, just for those that need reminding, that's Crete, York, Wahoo, Skyler, Gretna, Beatrice, Fairberry, Plattsmith, Blair, Nebraska City, Aurora, and Wayne. And our current total HRV, so hourly rate value, is the, I believe, fourth highest, which I think is still within the threshold that I want. I mean, the, my preference would be is this is incredibly important position to the city of Seward. We should continue to offer salaries and wages that are within the, the comparable range, but towards the top, because that's what you're gonna do to recruit the best candidates. And so I don't think we're out of range in any. We have a great health insurance program. And so my recommendation is just to continue to leave the wage as it is. But I did want to explain to you that I did look at the comparability. We're looking at communities like, I believe, Aurora, Gretna, and what's my other one? Creed is right there with us. And so is Beatrice. And so I think leaving, leaving it where it is is, is appropriate in regards to especially with trying to recruit a great person to step in and fill some big shoes. So.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I guess, one other one, just so you know, the title of all of those positions is explicitly clerk or clerk treasurer, which is pretty typical. But there are no administrative assistants or finance director elements in that, those job descriptions at those other cities.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. An ordinance to provide for annual classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to provide for a title change for city clerk slash human resources director, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for a date, such classification and pay ranges of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title designated as ordinance number 2021-7, and the title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Coulterman, second by Schmidt.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Camprit.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck.
Yes.
Miller. I think that was a yes. Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay. Again, this is ordinance number 2021-7. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wilken, second by Schmidt.
We have a motion and a second. Is ready for the discussion. Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number 2021-7 be finally passed and adopted? Please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilken.
Yes.
Camprit.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck. Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right, the next item, number five, is an ordinance amending the Seward Municipal Code, Chapter 51, Article 2, Reduction in the Spread of the Novel Coronavirus COVID-19, repealing Sections 52.1.1 through 52.1.11 related to face coverings. This is the second reading. An ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, Chapter 51, Article 2, Reduction of the Spread, in the Spread of the Corona. I think I just read this, but I'll read it one more time. An ordinance to amend the municipal code of the city of Seward, Chapter 51, Article 2, Reduction in the Spread of the Novel Coronavirus COVID-19, to repeal Sections 52.1.1 through 52.1.11 relating to face coverings, to repeal all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, to provide for an effective date, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. Greg, you want to lead this?
Yeah, I'll get started. We'll do some roadmapping here, and then we'll see where the discussion takes us. Right now, should nothing happen, no vote is taken in any direction, the current ordinance, as written in city code, will allow the current mask ordinance to sunset tomorrow. So it would expire without any action taken tonight. If we just did nothing, it will expire tomorrow. There, in speaking with the mayor, we tried to figure out There, in speaking with the mayor, we tried to figure out what the best way to move forward on this tonight was, because we always plan to have this discussion the night before it was to move forward with the sunset. Well, with the introduction and discussion at the last meeting of this current ordinance you have in front of you, we felt this was an appropriate vehicle that we can use to either be done with the face covering requirements. And my recommendation to you would be that if, if it's the way that you feel at the end of the discussion or currently that you would like to see this ordinance cease, I would vote to move this ordinance as we have it drafted. It cleans up the city code and is a, is a clean way for us to be, uh, move on from this at the moment. Uh, if your intent in any way is to extend the face covering ordinance, we'll use this device and we'll amend it tonight to include an amendment to that sunset date to a date in the future. But that would be my preference. Again, if for some reason we can't get six votes to go one way or the other, because you, it's going to require a suspension of the rules to push that all the way through this evening. If we don't go one way or the other, that way and suspend the rules, the ordinance will, uh, sunset tomorrow and that will be the end of it until further actions taken, if any. But that's kind of our, we have three lines of thought here. We can go completely suspend the rules, pass as it's proposed tonight. That cleans up the ordinance, ends the face covering ordinance. We can do nothing. It'll sunset tomorrow. Technically, it's still on the books, but it's enforceable. And, um, you may have to come back and clean it up months from now and get it out of there, because it's not useful. Or you could extend it by making, uh, an amendment to the sunset date. So those are kind of the three options on the table. Um, again, from a ministry perspective, if you feel strongly that you would like to see this cease, we'd ask that you move the current ordinance as proposed, because it just cleans everything up. But we'll, we'll go with where the discussion takes us. That's kind of the roadmapping for tonight. If mayor, I don't know if you plan on taking discussion at the moment, if you want to see where the council wants to go. But if anyone does want to speak on this item and we do get to that point, we're going to open it up. You need to message me on the Zoom chat and I will recognize you. You have to state your name and address.
Let's do the public comment now.
Okay. If anybody wants to speak on this item, I need you to text me in the chat at city of Seward. Just let me know your name. Hopefully your name is your name on Zoom. I'll try to track you down. Uh, we will at the end, kind of open it up for everybody if there's anybody else at the end. I'm gonna start my queue here while we get ready to go. And then once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, uh, then it'll be turned back over to the mayor and the council and then they'll be in control of the meeting again. I have one person in the queue and it is Christie. I think I saw. Let's see if she jumped to my other screen. I have quite a few screens of people. So I want to check. There she is. All right, Chrissy, you're, you're already unmuted. You're good to go.
All right. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Um, just going over, I've been watching.
I'm gonna interrupt you. Name and, name and address.
Christie Ideas, 1990 Rainbow Avenue, Seward, Nebraska. Um, I spent the past few days going over previous city council minutes or meetings via, watching them on YouTube. Um, so I'm just going to go back over some things. October 20th, the risk dial was at 2.56 and that was when we had a citizen request for a mask mandate. And multiple citizens and business owners spoke out against the mask mandate at that time. Several members on the council stated they would prefer to not have a mandate and thought the citizens of Seward could be trusted for to social distance and wear a mask when they couldn't, stay home when they weren't feeling well. December 1st, the risk dial was at 3.19. A mask mandate ordinance was on the agenda for discussion. The first reading took place that night. On December 3rd, a special meeting was held for the second reading. The risk dial was still at 3.19. Uh, the ordinance to vote with the bypass of the third reading passed and the mandate passed became effective December 5th at 10 a.m. About approximately a week later, the state loosened restrictions also around that time. January 5th, the risk dial, risk dial was at 2.38. The council had to decide if they would let the mask mandate sunset on the 6th or extend it. Roger Reamer with Memorial Healthcare Systems and Laura with the Health Department each asked for six weeks time to buy some more time to get the vaccines out. At this time, 330 vaccines would be completed on January 6th and it would take six weeks for the highest vulnerable group to reach immunity after getting the vaccine. Six weeks would be February 15th, 16th. Roger also said he would like to see two cases a day to let the mandate expire. Council member Chris Schmidt said he would like to see the risk dial and cases look the same or better by March 3rd. On February 16th, the risk dial was at 1.75. Multiple citizen requests for the mandate, um, to be lifted were put on the council or on the agenda. We were at the six week mark at that point that the hospital administrator and the health department wanted for the vaccine immunity to start happening. Council member Chris Schmidt also said at this time, he would like to keep the mandate in place until March 3rd and at this time was not in the camp for extending it come March 3rd. The motion to bypass the three reading rule failed, making tonight the second reading. Today, the risk dial is still at 1.75. We are now eight weeks since the vaccine started rolling out in January. Last week, Hastings, Carney, Grand Island and Gretna let their mandates expire. In the two-day period of February 25th and 26th, York County had two new cases. Seward County had one new case. Polk and Butler Counties had zero. York let their mask mandate expire this past Sunday. My question to Roger Reamer, Laura with the Health Department and Chris Schmidt, are you people of your word and you let the mandate expire? Or will you continue to keep moving the goalposts to keep it in place? We have businesses in our town that want this mandate gone, the citizens that want to wear one can and still will wear one. And some people have been conditioned enough by the fear of this virus that they will continue to wear the mask long after the virus has run its course and disappeared like viruses do. There's not really one, there's not one peer reviewed study out there that proves masks work, but there are hundreds of peer reviewed studies that prove the masks don't work. So please respect the wishes of the business owners and citizens that would like to see this mandate expire and let it sunset. Thank you.
All right. Next I have Stephanie. I think you're already unmuted, Stephanie. So go ahead. Name and address.
Um, Stephanie Rouse, 1432 North 8 Streets, Seward, Nebraska. Um, I submitted a letter to the council earlier and a copy of a New York Times article. Well, did you receive that? Yes. Okay. Um, I just want to, you know, I agree with, um, Christie, everybody sick of wearing masks, including me. But we aren't just a little island here. We're part of a huge country that, um, has experienced 500,000 deaths, I believe it is so far. And we need to make a concerted push as a nation to get this beat down. And right now, um, Rochelle Walensky, who is the director of the CDC, is saying, it's really not the time to shut down and to roll back mask restrictions and other restrictions. Because if we do, we're going to stop it while the rate is still at an unexceptionally high level. And that we must take this extremely seriously. She said that we are trying to head off a possible fourth stage of, of infections and they're concerned about these outside variants that are coming in to the country and spreading rapidly. And, um, the Biden administration, I know when he first came to office, asked for a 90-day mask period and he hasn't had that yet. But, um, he's stating that, uh, he's asking Americans to remain patient. He knows it's hard. He knows we all want to get back to normal. And, um, he just says this would be very unwise while levels are still hovering at 700,000 per day. I mean, 70,000 per day and the cities are in this nation's condition is still quite perilous. And, um, that's about it. You know, I'm not going to get into the argument of whether masks work or not. It's been pretty much determined that they do work. And, um, I think maybe we can credit that for the fact that they have gone down and since we enacted the mask mandate. We have seen a decline in deaths and that could very well be partly due to the mask mandate. Um, nobody thinks it's fun, but this is a bigger fight we're in. We're trying to beat this thing on a national level. And the, the nation's directors, the CDC director, the president, Dr. Fauci, they understand economics. They understand that shops and businesses are hurting. But they also understand that, um, they, they need to clobber this and get it back to an acceptable level. We might still have it around, but, um, we need to do better than we're doing now to, to fight it. And she needs, that we need all, all of the country to do that, Seward included. And I'm asking you as a patriotic measure and as a sensible health measure to extend the mandate for, until, until it's, until we get this, uh, go ahead from the national people working on it, the CDC, the doctors, that it's really okay to, uh, let it go back.
Thank you, Stephanie. Um, I have one more in my queue right now and that is Terry. Find her. And Terry, if you're unmuted, go ahead and get started. I'm scanning through all my.
I am. I just, I'm having a hard time getting my camera to want to work. So.
That's okay. We can't hear you.
Face. So as long as you can hear me, I'm Terry Hopson, 1356 Fairlane Avenue, Seward, Nebraska. Um, I'm just gonna, you guys have all heard from me more than once and, um, it's just time. It's time to let it go and I'm sorry, but you look at surrounding York. No more. Um, Grand Island, Carney, um, Hastings, these are bigger, obviously cities. No more. Um, and I'm gonna go against what someone just talked about. I don't, I, I think if we leave it into, uh, the government or whatever, however she said that, I, I don't foresee this ever lifting, to be honest with you. Um, if we're going to continue to wait for that process, if that makes sense. Um, it's time, it's time. I'm going to be honest as a business owner. There are so many people, once again, who are not masking and everyone is tired of it, you know? I, I had one customer in today. She knows the rules. She literally said, I'm tired of it. I have been fighting, been fighting a bacterial infection. I just can't do this no more. And it, it's not, I, like I've said it before, I'm not a mask police. That's her choice. It's her freedom of right. And, um, she was very happy to do her shopping and breathe freely. And that's it. We need to start. Um, I still am a hundred percent not a believer that masks have helped. I have quite a few people who have gotten the virus with wearing a mask. So to me, the virus is a virus. It can happen just like influenza did. Um, I have not masked hardly at all, to be honest with you. Um, I do when it was necessary. Um, and I have stayed very healthy. Um, I take my vitamins. I take my D3. I get my proper sleep. I exercise. I eat healthy. And it's time to just let, let's get back. Let's get back to normal life. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry. Next in my queue list, I have Reagan, Kay and Peyton. Go ahead, Reagan.
Hi guys. Reagan Heine, 3456 Branch Stoke Road, Staplehurst.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I really want people to listen to what the majority of us are asking for. I don't think at this point that it's unreasonable to let the mask mandate sunset as of tomorrow. Our numbers have continually gone down and in all honesty, in looking at the Four Corners risk dial, I still do not understand why, if there were only three cases within Four Corners Health Department, why we're still considered in the yellow. That makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever. And I wish that there were somewhere, someone on here that could answer that. And hopefully the Health Department will be able to answer that for us, because these effects go so much further than just a city mask mandate. And I'm pretty sure that majority of people on here are aware of that. But the citizens within the community who do not wear, want to wear a mask or who cannot wear a mask are, are tired of this. And we'll continue to stand up and we will continue to speak at these meetings and we will continue to fight back and we will continue to provide data. But at this point, I really don't think that it's necessary any longer. We, we have the data to support that numbers are going down. So for those of who want, for those people who want to continue wearing a mask, please do. That is your choice. That is your right. But for those of us who cannot and do not want to wear one any longer, we shouldn't have to. We've done our part. We've done what we've needed to do in order to bring numbers down. We've done that. So please, I'm asking you at this time to let the mask mandate sunset. Thank you.
Greg, do you have someone else in the queue?
Yes, I was checking out my police presence over here. Sorry. Next we have Kay Hanson.
Yeah. Hey, uh, Kay Hanson, 2010 Rainbow here in Seward, Nebraska. And, um, after the last meeting, I, um, I, I sent an email to my two council members and, um, heard back from one, which I appreciate the dialogue back and forth. But, um, I, I would really like to see it go by the wayside. I see people come in our place of business too and, uh, young, old, it doesn't matter, but the, the ones that really get to me are, uh, you know, I have older people that come in. I don't know if they're from Seward or they're from other towns. I don't know. So I don't, because I don't know everybody, but they come in and then they realize, oh, they don't have their mask on. And the look on their face is like this sheepish, like, oh, I got my hand caught in the cookie jar and they feel bad. And in my head, I'm thinking, why is this person that actually, you know, was courageous enough to come out and take care of their business? Um, why do they feel bad about coming in? And that they shouldn't ever have to, I, I just think they shouldn't have to feel that way. And, um, you know, the mandate's been in place. Obviously it's not been actually, um, policed by law enforcement. Um, a lot of businesses don't police it. I particularly am not standing out in our lobby policing it. I have had my clerks yelled at from people that, there's other people in the lobby and they're yelling at my clerk saying, they don't have a mask on. Well, should, should my clerk have to, you know, yell at another customer to put a mask on? I, I, I just don't feel that that's their place either. And, um, I just, I really hope that it goes away. I, I fear for the downtown areas sometimes. You know, I drive by sometimes. There's a lot of empty stalls down there at times. And I, um, wonder where they're taking their business sometimes. I know a lot of it's online. Um, I can vouch for that. But, uh, I, I just don't want our downtown to become a ghost town like, like some of the other communities our size in Nebraska. And you all know that we are in Nebraska and we love our freedoms here. Uh, we have some of the best patriots and we love our freedoms. And I think freedom of choice is, um, very high on our list. So please let this mandate go by the wayside. Thank you.
Next I have Peyton.
Um, I'm Peyton Davis Schmidt. I live at 1320 Augusta Drive. Um, I just want to echo Stephanie's statement that we are still in need of masks and our country's public health experts are asking that we keep mandates in place. Um, and I just want to note that there are several peer reviewed studies that do show that masks are effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Peyton. I have two more. Up next I have Michelle Mueller. Thank you, Peyton. I have two more. Up next, I have Michelle Mueller and Bryce. After that. Michelle, trying to unmute you. There we go. Are you there? Don't have any audio, Michelle. Oh, oh, it's.
Can't hear you. You might just need to turn it up a little.
Go on to the next one.
No, you're good. I can hear you now.
Hear you. We can hear you.
Go ahead.
This is Michelle Mueller, four thirteen Ash Street, Seward, Nebraska. My husband and I own a business here in town also. And if we had our choice, we would say let this mask mandate retire. We're not huge maskers. We try and be respectful when customers come in. If they feel as though they want to wear a mask, they're welcome to. But I've never told a person if they had to. If it's an older couple and they want me to wear one, I will do so. And when I go to a customer's house, by all means, I go by what they want. If they want us to wear masks, we will. If they say you don't have to, I won't. I think most people in Seward would be respectful. I would like to think we'd be respectful of each other's wishes. And if somebody, if I'm entering someone's home, obviously, that's their premises. And whatever they want, I go by. But I think we should have respect enough for each other and allowing businesses to choose whether they want people to wear masks when they come in or not. I just feel as though we're the ones paying the taxes, we're the ones paying the mortgages. We're the ones who have to pay the insurances. We should be able to kind of choose whether we want to have to wear masks in our businesses. Again, I try and be respectful when people come in. If they really want me to, I will. But if they're comfortable without wearing a mask, we, we don't. It's just, I feel as though there's a certain, I like to be able to smile at people and let them know that I respect them or I'm, you know, I just want to have that camaraderie with people with a visual and a mouth and be able to connect with the person that way. So like I said, if I had my choice, I would like to see this mask mandate retire at the end of today or tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, I have Bryce. And I actually have two Galaxy S nines. So we're gonna ask both of them, and we'll see which one I get.
Yeah, I'm on this one.
I got, there you go. You're good.
Hey, this is Bryce Stanley, six forty South Second Street, Seward, Nebraska. Just really quickly, I want to state that if we want to look at this on a national level and specifically what was mentioned in the New York Times. If we want to look at New York and California, those economies have been destroyed because of coronavirus restrictions. And the New York governor is actually very under the gun right now because of, of it. We can look at Texas. They just claimed, I think, today that they're gonna open their whole state up a hundred percent. No more masks, no nothing. I think North Dakota even banned face masks and made it illegal to make that an ordinance. So I think a lot of places around the country, if we want to look at a national level, are opening up and getting back to, to business as it should be. I think we're hurting local businesses drastically, I would think. And it's time to open things back up.
Thanks, Bryce. At this point, I have no one else left in my queue. You may open it up there. I'll see if we get anybody else here. They may know what this. See if I have what options I have. I think that is gonna be it.
All right, let's close the public comment portion then and open up to the council for any questions or comments.
Well, I guess I'll go first. You know, I, I think that, you know, what we did with the mask mandate, which was requested by the health professionals locally, served a good purpose. I think that, you know, we have seen the numbers decline. I, I found out today, I was doing some research, about twenty-three percent of, you know, hospitalizations.
Not at all, either.
Twenty-three percent drop in hospitalizations in the state of Nebraska in the last two weeks alone. You know, I think our numbers are low, that lower than when we put this in place. I'm comfortable letting it expire tonight with the caveat that if we were to see dramatic spikes or if we were to have a situation where the Health Department and the hospital and the doctors together came back and said that they were very concerned again, we would consider looking at this as an option in the future. But I'm comfortable with letting it expire tonight.
I'll jump in next if nobody else is gonna talk. So, you know, I, I agree with what Jessica just said. And, uh, you know, you guys have heard me say this before, government is hard. You know, we, we try to make the right decisions with the information that we have. And in, in this case, you know, numerous emails say that we're operating out of fear when we put in a mask mandate. Uh, I disagree with that. But we, we are taking the position of caution when we put the mask mandate in place. You know, and so we, we hope we make the right decisions. And given where we're at numbers wise today and where cases have gone, uh, I think we made the right decision when we put the, the mandate in place. And I'm not going to be on board with extending this. We'll let it expire. And I hope I make the right decision when I do that. Uh, but I do agree with Jessica that if we get to the point where things get critical in our health experts, not New York, not Texas, not anywhere else, our health experts ask for our help, I'm, I'm gonna be right there to give it to them. You know, that being said, we've had many times people who have commented, read to us. I'm gonna read to you tonight. You know, I've commented in the past that I look to our health experts. Local, being our physicians at the hospital and Roger. Dr. Bob Reiner, if, if any of you follow him on YouTube, he puts out a weekly update of statewide where the coronavirus is at. And then I think we can all agree that we have a wonderful facility at UNMC. And if I had something that was wrong with me, I would, and local couldn't take care of it, that's where I want to be. I, I want them to help me. And so this, uh, this one, I'm gonna read to you is a statement from UNMC. It was dated February second. And I'm, I'm just gonna read it to you. I'm gonna put my glasses on to do that. Cases of coronavirus disease twenty nineteen COVID nineteen in Nebraska have reduced to levels last seen in early October. Hospitalization levels remained high but have also lowered to levels last seen in late October of twenty twenty. And Nebraska deaths have eased to levels last seen in November of twenty twenty. The easing of these key COVID twenty nineteen indicators are encouraging and indicate that preventive measures implemented during the October through December months were impactful. That being said, the current disease levels remain concerning and have the same potential for explosive growth in cases, hospitalizations and deaths if community prevention measures are relaxed. Communities must continue to take action to suppress transmission to prevent excess deaths and hospitalizations that have stressed out our hospitals to their breaking point for over four months. The available scientific evidence clearly shows that mask mandates can significantly reduce community transmission of COVID and are particularly important community prevention measures as we face a rise in the infections of COVID nineteen variants from the UK, South Africa and Brazil that have been characterized as more infectious than the virus Nebraska has battled to date. Therefore, ordinances mandating the wearing of face masks, excuse me, outside of one's home are a low cost and effective tool that can help communities protect vulnerable populations, health system functions and economic vitality, even as more easily transmitted viruses take hold in our communities. The consensus of infectious disease and public health experts continues to strengthen in support of the efficacy of face masks, including multi-layered cloth masks for reducing community transmission of COVID nineteen. The U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has published a scientific brief documenting the role of face masks in COVID nineteen transmission, citing forty-five supporting papers and studies. Recently, a team of leading U.S. researchers examined the breadth of evidence and found a preponderance of evidence indicating that mask wearing reduces transmissibility of virus and strongly recommend widespread use of in regulations for widespread mask use published in the Proceedings of the U.S. National Academy of Science. Many population centers across Nebraska enacted mask ordinance in late fall that contributed to the reduction of COVID nineteen infections and reaped the benefits outlined in the Goldman Sachs Economist Study of Improved Community Compliance, Reduced Cases and Reduced Negative Economic Consequences in Communities by Avoiding Shutdowns and School Closures. In conclusion, the public health and infection disease experts in the Global Center of Health Security at the University of Nebraska Medical Center agree that mandatory universal face mask use is an effective tool for reducing community transmission of COVID nineteen, especially when faced with the threat of more infectious coronavirus variants taking hold in our communities. Mask mandates should be used in a layered combination of community non-pharmaceutical interventions in order to create the largest reduction in COVID nineteen cases. The brief that I just read to you is signed by five executive directors of, I'm guessing, the various departments at UNMC. So I, I am gonna vote to suspend this tonight because I, we are in a good place. And I, and I hope I don't make the wrong decision tonight. And I don't want people thinking that because we let this expire, we remove this ordinance, that we're somehow out of the woods and that everything is completely back to normal because it is not normal yet. We all hope to get there and, you know, we're, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I'll just say that. I, I think we, we're getting there and we can get there. So I just encourage everyone to please continue to social distance, wash your hands. If you can wear a mask, wear a mask. And again, as I've said before, be kind to each other. Please be kind to each other. Name calling doesn't help. Thank you.
Any other councilors wish to speak?
From my perspective, I know I've been appointed to this from the beginning. And I'm not gonna get into details of the tyranny of experts or anything like that on the debate on that. My comments are more procedurally on this for us as the council and just kind of reiterate what Greg already said of, you know, do we vote on this to suspend the statutory rule? And vote for the ordinance to repeal these sections? I know I'm of the opinion that that's the right way to go through this procedurally. If we do want to extend it or bring it back, we'll still have to go through all these steps again. So I don't see there's technically a, a, a reason not to vote to repeal this. We do already have this drafted if we do need to bring it back or if anybody feels we need to bring it back. So I know I'll be voting to dispense with the rule and to repeal this off the books.
I'll echo what Carl just said.
Yeah, I agree.
There's no reason not to clean it up tonight. If there would be a need to bring it back, we, we bring an ordinance back.
Right.
So when the council, if that's the direction the council wants to go, then at the appropriate time, I would just need a motion to dispense with the statutory rule. And we would proceed with that ordinance that I read earlier for the second reading. But I don't want to cut off debate. If you still want to discuss it, you sure can. But that would be the next step at that time.
Mayor, I'm just gonna add some items real quick. I'll follow up with, we did pass on to the council, as Stephanie noted, all the emails we received on this as of today. So those were forwarded to the council for their purview. I did check with Chief Peters. Officially, we received four complaints that made it to the PD. We responded to all four of them, spoke directly with the offending parties. No citations were issued. We started those conversations as an educational one, just like we said when we passed it, how we would enforce it. And so I just want to clarify that the enforcement by the PD was exactly to the word as we stated, we would enforce it when it was passed. We received a fifth complaint, but that complaint was towards a political body, which we didn't have any authority over in the first place. So we were not gonna go enforce the mask ordinance on a higher political body. And those were the only total five complaints that we received officially at this city.
I'll, oh, go ahead. I was gonna say, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I was gonna say the same thing. I don't want to cut anybody off, but I'll introduce it as well. Go, go ahead.
There'll still be opportunity to discuss if you'd like. So we have, um, so we have a motion to dispense with statutory rule. Is there a second, Carl?
There, I'll second, yeah.
Everybody's yelling for that one. I'm gonna go with the motion by Coulterman and due to the mayor's request, asking Carl first if that was his intent. Then the second by Miller. Motion by Coulterman, second by Miller to suspend statutory rules.
Unless there's any further discussion, please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Campereth.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck. I'm sorry, Alan. Was that a yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right, again, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash five. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So moved. Moved to approve.
Move by Schmidt, second by Campereth.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, the question is, should ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash five be finally passed and adopted? Please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Campereth.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck. Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes eight to zero.
All right, that is the last ordinance we have for this evening. So I'll need one final motion to make all these ordinances a part of the permanent record.
So moved.
Move by Wilkin, second by Coulterman.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Campereth.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck. Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for participating. I know this has been a tough discussion, but I do appreciate everyone who's taken the time to join our Zoom meetings in the past and tonight so that we could have a fruitful discussion. And with that, then I'll move on to the next item, which is the City Administrator's Report.
Yes, um, kind of all the same stuff. Yes, um, kind of all the same stuff. Obviously, we had uh, the rolling blackouts and that was, kind of took up a big portion of uh, some of my time over the last two weeks. Um, and so if you do have any questions that you need answered on that, um, here, I can try to do that. I think I provided you the best information I could throughout the time of that emergency. Again, the reason that we probably lucked out is due to the nature of behind the two breakers controlled by MPPD. Uh, we have critical infrastructure, including the hospital, the jail, nine one one center, wastewater treatment plant, water treatment plant, other facilities uh, that just aren't high on the list for being shut down. And so that's likely the reason that we were not included on the list of those rolling blackouts. But again, thanks to the community for keeping on their toes uh, and working with city administration to uh, get information out there and, and try to be prepared and have good action and emergency plans in place. Uh, kudos to the electric department as well for all their work. Um, continue to serve on unified command. I know that uh, for, for the COVID calls, uh, we were on there this afternoon. Just continued to, even with the mask mandate, uh, remove, encourage people to practice the three Cs, uh, social distance if you can. Uh, and uh, we'll uh, continue to get through this, but I'll continue to serve on that unified command. Uh, other than that, we are doing our uh, employee recognition, uh, awards and dinners. Uh, normally we would have a dinner that we would have and invite all of the employees, the council, the mayor would be there. But due to restrictions and, and usually we're in a pretty tight space as it is everywhere we end up, uh, we didn't do that. So we're going through and doing breakfasts individually with departments and recognizing them for their service. Uh, we have members that are celebrating anywhere from ten years to forty years of service with the city of Seward this year. And so we're making sure uh, that we're recognizing them, getting together in small groups uh, and passing out those, those service awards and recognizing uh, the work that was done this past year. So, other than that, I can answer any questions you have. A lot of projects, now that we're getting into March, a lot of projects are kicking off. So I think in my next report, you'll see quite a few things going on in town. Uh, and we'll continue to battle potholes. Oh man, if I get rid of the snow that's piled up by getting split in Amigos and all those other places, I can really dig into Highway fifteen. But we have to get rid of the moisture. That's what's popping them back out. They're trying to do their best to get out there, but it's a really time sensitive process to put in a good patch uh, and not get beat up by the, the weather and the moisture. So, but we'll continue to fight it.
And Greg, at this time, um, we're planning to uh, return to in-person council meetings starting um, April. And so uh, if councilors have any concerns or questions, please just contact Greg directly and let him know. But um, as of right now, we're planning to uh, return to the civic center uh, for the time being. Um, and then as we transition eventually, hopefully back to the municipal building. But Greg, do you want to add anything to that?
Nope, that's our plan. Again, we'll continue to have the setup down here socially distanced. Um, and uh, we'll have everybody down here come April. If you do have any questions, concerns, please let me know though.
Any questions or comments for Greg?
So just to clarify that, the next one here on the sixteenth will still be Zoom.
Yes.
The first one in April will be back at the civic.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Pursuant to the current governor's um, ordinance or governor's executive order, we could go through April. But uh, we're gonna go back in at the beginning of April.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we would entertain a motion to accept the report.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Moved by Coulterman, second by Campereth.
The motion and a second, please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Campereth.
Yes.
Beck. Miller.
Hendricks, yes.
Yes.
And Hendricks. Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right, do we have any future requests for council agenda items or administrative action?
I do. So uh, back in budget season when uh, we were going through things and we had the discussion around uh, rate increases, uh, we made comment about putting together a uh, little committee to take a look at our utilities and what, if anything, can be done to uh, ease the burden uh, from a rate standpoint. So uh, just throwing that out there as a reminder to our uh, city administrator to uh,
I spoke to Nick tonight when he was in the office still right before this meeting. And our plan is to pull together the finance and audit committee to review uh, some documentation that we've gotten. Uh, we got the rate information in from MPP on where we stand comparable to other communities. So we'll be able to share that at a meeting. So we'll get that called and uh, the four members that serve on that committee will, will call you together and bring in.
Very good.
All right, if that's the only one, then I will ask Jonathan Jenk if you have any upcoming events we should know about.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, if you didn't already see, the Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership celebrated five years as an organization in mid-February. Uh, I just want to specifically say thank you to the Seward City Council's uh, support of our organization from formation to today. We're grateful for the partnership and look forward to our continued work together. Um, to save the dates, to remind the Seward City Council about, and just a couple of extra things that I haven't mentioned before, um, Saturday, April twenty-fourth will be the annual Seward Cleanup Day from eight AM to noon, uh, which will include hazardous waste collection. We have confirmed that uh, with Four Corners Health Department. So we appreciate their partnership on that grant opportunity. Uh, Megan Kaler from our team sent you an email this afternoon with more details. We'll be starting to market this to the public in the near future. And Monday, April twenty-sixth will be the annual Seward County Chamber and Development Partnership's annual awards banquet, where we celebrate the accomplishments of our members. It'll be taking place virtually this year and we encourage you to be one of the first one hundred to buy your tickets. The first one hundred participants will receive a Seward County experience box with unique local items that have been purchased or donated to offer a special taste of our local business community. Contact our office if you'd like more details. Lastly, our detailed quarterly written report was included in your consent agenda. Feel free to reach out if you have any questions. With that, that's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Jonathan. Uh, and with that, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Singleton, second by Schmidt.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Coulterman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Wilkin.
Yes.
Campereth.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Beck. Miller.
Yes.
Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.
Thanks.